Start, I've got six oh one.
All right, well, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Wyndham Northie Supervisor Union Board to order at six oh four one. Welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. Let's do a quick round of introductions by school. By voting school board members on the SU board and I'll start with those on the screen. So go to Kathy.
Kathy Siana Goodwin, Grafton Chair of the Athens Grafton School.
I'm Hardy Merrill, Athens Grafton School.
Perfect, thank you so much. And in the room, Mary Fader, Grafton Rep to the high school board.
Lynn Morgan, Athens on the Grafton Athens Board.
Rick Holloway, Rockingham Board.
Cheryl Charles, Westminster Board Chair of this board.
Jamie Staro from Westminster on the high school board.
All right, and Priscilla, your guest, but go ahead, please.
I'm on the high school board, but not on this board.
Thank you, great. All right, with that, any adjustments to the agenda?
Just one, under eleven executive session, we don't perceive a need for executive session at this time.
Okay, we'll delete eleven. Actually, of other school board members, I'd like, even though not a member of this board. Caitlin, I'd love to have you introduce yourself to if you'd like to.
Sure, I'm Caitlin Deshane Desmond. I'm a member of the Rockingham School Board.
Excellent. Thank you so much for being here tonight. In terms of other adjustments to the agenda, under five review and approved minutes from January fifteenth, we do have the December four minutes and they were sent out just in advance of this meeting. So we can include those also. And just looking, I don't see any other adjustments to the agenda. So with that, we'll turn to communications and public comment. All right, any from the screen? All right, no communication and public comment tonight.
I'm sorry Cheryl, I was having trouble raising my hand, but is it okay if I make a public comment?
Of course it is, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to speak in support of the transgender and gender nonconforming student policy that I know the board is considering for approval tonight. Because I know there have been some concerns circulating about how it might conflict with any federal guidance or executive orders. I think this policy provides really important protections that keep kids safe and helps them learn. It's one that's already been adopted by boards across the state. And I think as the Vermont Human Rights Commission affirmed on Friday, the protections against discrimination based on gender identity outlined in the policy are pretty firmly established in Vermont law. So I just wanted to state my support for it and thank you for considering.
All right, thank you very much. So the record shows that, that's fine. Again, any other communication or public comment? Seeing none, then we'll go to action. I entertain a motion to review and approve minutes from December four and January fifteenth. Where are the December four minutes? They were sent out just this afternoon, so you may not have seen them. They should be in your email.
And Lynn, Lynn, they are in this packet that I handed you.
They are right there.
I make a motion to.
Oh, there it is, okay. All right, Rick has made a motion to approve the minutes from December four and January fifteenth. Any corrections to either of those minutes? I would note that the January fifteen minutes have a great many just little typos on them. And I, we should maybe have a better procedure for looking at those ahead of time and sending those. They're not substantive, but there are a number of misspellings. One example would be Secretary Saunders, for example, spelled like Sanders. And, and some other things in there that, that need correcting and maybe we could. Well, we could, I just, those are cosmetic, they're not substantive, but I'd love to see those get cleaned up. Karen Blanchard, welcome. We have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from December four and January fifteen. Any additional comments or corrections? All right, then I'll go to the screen and do a roll call again, just because when we're remote, we go through that procedure. Kathy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you, and Hardy?
Aye.
Thank you. And all of those in the room, all the favors say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved, thank you. So the next item is. The Director of Finance.
Yeah, so I'm gonna help with that. And Ed apologizes, he had a. Another commitment that was tonight, told me it should be his last one on a Wednesday night, so he should be available in future Wednesdays. But in, in the pack, and I know it was sent out late, he apologizes as well, he's still trying to get up to speed on, on getting things and a lot of. You know, to do business managers, they think a little different, so he's trying to take how Jim did things and move them into how he does things and kind of work through there. So what he's prepared is there's three pages that were sent out. And these have to do with, the first one is central office, just where we sit as far as what falls under central office. Going through everything with all the encumbrances right now, we are trending to be about forty-four thousand dollars over budget. And we're going back and looking at things right now to see if there's a possibility. Some of that you'll see under what's titled elementary education. Those are the substitutes. So there's a bill back that has to happen for substitutes, so all substitutes come through the SU for payment process and then we bill back out the other districts. So once that's. Once that gets righted, that should take care of a little bit of that. The other piece that Ed wanted me to point out is in that second. Block, you'll see it's, it's in italicized, it says adjustment to prior year. And you'll see it has a budget of zero, there's an encumbrance, a year-to-date expense, and then the balance. That is the. That is the money that was sent back to the different districts. And so one of the things that I really appreciate about what Ed's talking about is that, so that was the surpluses from the SU that got sent back and then we had to claw back a little bit of it. So a surplus, when you have a surplus that was in FY twenty-four, we're paying it out in FY twenty-five. So it, it actually is an adjustment to the prior year and was not taken into account in the budget process. So therefore it shows as an expense in a, in a, you'll see the expense of seven hundred eighty-seven thousand and change. So if you were to take that out, we're actually seven hundred and some thousand dollars to the good in central office. But because we had that prior expense and the way we have to show it, so he wanted me to just explain that piece to it. And if there's any questions, I'll take. I can take them back to Ed and we can kind of go through it. The second sheet is special education. And right now, again, with all the encumbrances, we are trending about a million dollars over budget. Much of that is due to. What we're seeing in, in unanticipated costs in instruction that has to do with the contracted services as opposed to hiring staff directly for ourselves. But also in some of the out-of-district placement of students that we've had to do. We've had some students move in to district that had large expenses that were out of district, they weren't anticipated. So that's some of the pieces. We also, when we went through the budgeting process last year. There, there was an increase in the need for speech pathology as we went into it. And so we knew that that line was going to be over because we had to provide some services. But I have asked Heather Willis Doxy and her team to go back, look at, because we have canceled some of our contracts because we hired some staff and stuff. So where can we look at? Because right now the business office has all the contracts encumbered, there could be some areas we can find actually to move some monies back, if that made sense. Okay.
And then crazy transportation line there. The bottom line.
Yeah, I didn't go over that exactly with him, so I can, I'll get some information on that for you.
Thanks, Rick.
And then in the third one is early childhood, so this is the pre-K program. And so right now that is, again, trending to be about twenty-one thousand. To the good or the black, so it's not over budget, about twenty-one thousand dollars under budget. And so. But he's trying to break these pieces out that are SU expenses so we can see them a little better, so.
So any questions for Andy about the finance directors report, particularly things he can take back to, to Ed? Anyone? I see Hardy's hand, yes, please.
I'm just looking at the transportation and, or the early childhood, excuse me. And I, I noticed that we have a budget of nine hundred and forty-four thousand and a budget revenue and expense both of the same number. But what we're analyzing here is a much less number, so I don't quite understand that. And I think maybe we need to get that clarified for the next meeting. I'm also a little concerned about the special education being over by a million dollars. And I think at either the next finance committee meeting or the next meeting that we have. That we need a real detailed explanation of what's going on here and what steps can be taken to curtail that to some extent. Thank you.
Thank you, Hardy. Yeah, I would certainly reinforce what Hardy has just said in both, in both cases. You know, looking, Hardy's pointed out in the, in the early ad, the projected revenue is only two hundred forty-two thousand and yet at the top of the page, it's. Do you have a question for Cheryl? It, it just try not to have the side talk was what was going on there.
Yeah.
And then similarly, under special education, the revenue and the expenses don't match what's above it. They, you know, they just don't, they're not the same. Nor, nor does the front page. So, so we just have a couple of questions about the reporting format as well as the, I think, very serious concern about special education.
Yep.
Yeah. On that transportation question. Right, thank you, yeah, Rick had the, why, that's from nine hundred to sixty-seven thousand, I believe it is, encumbered, encumbered. So we'll look forward to seeing you, but thank you for conveying those, those questions. Now let's go to the superintendent's report.
Okay, let's pull that out. Okay, so this did go out, so I will just try and highlight some things. There's a, there's information on, we were supposed to do some testing with the University of Iowa with the PCBs in this building. They contacted us and regretfully told us that they had to cancel coming because of funding issues that were happening. Because their whole project is funded through federal grants. So we don't know if that's going to kick up again, but. It was, it was helpful to have when they came and did it the first time, because that actually helped identify some of the remediation projects that we were doing, so. We're hopeful for that. We, I just included, just so everyone is up to speed on the, what is called an ECA, which is the evaluation of corrective action alternatives. That the high school is looking at for the PCB remediation. And currently that's open for public comment. We ask that if there's someone who has a comment, to send a comment directly to me and then I can forward it on to our consultants to get answers or to let them know what. Feelings are, so that's why that is there. We're just welcome, opening it up to, to comment. Also. Ricky Adams, our IT director is here, he's going to talk about our new website and launching, which we're looking to do tomorrow. There's a typo there, I was trying to move a day faster, I guess, so I apologize for that. It will be the February twentieth, which is tomorrow, not the nineteenth.
Can I have a question about PCBs?
Yes.
Just, there's a suit against Monsanto and is there a way that we can get an update from, I know it's nationwide, but it definitely affects us.
Yes, I will reach out. So there's two lawsuits going on, just so everyone is clear, there's the, the one that Pietro Lynn's firm is a part of. And we did sign on to be a part of that. And then there is the Attorney General's lawsuit, so I will, but I will see what I can find out about the Attorney Generals, but I can reach out through Pietro and ask him for an update, so. Hey, so Ricky's here, he's going to talk about our new website and walk you through that a little bit in a little while here. There is the Vermont, the V cap data, which has just been released on last year. The, the V cap is the state assessment, it used to be smarter balance. And so we're unpacking that and, and taking a look at it with the principles and everything. We'll be spending some time walking around that and looking at it. But that just, did just get released, so we wanted to make sure people were aware of that. And then the, the other one, if you get a chance to look at that video, it's pretty cool to see a couple of our kids went up to Mount Pilier. With Carrie Newton, who runs our OVX, which is a, I'm sorry, I don't know the actual what OVX stands for. But it has, we get it through our tobacco grant, so it has to do with substance abuse. But it's just cool to see our kids up there advocating. And then also is just the policies which we will go over later, that we've had up for public comment. And then the last one that I had was just, I've been asked to serve on a policy sprint team for the AOE as part of the governor's proposal. I'm switching the SUs or the SDs or, or the governance thing. Being on a sprint team, and I was very clear about this, I didn't want to be on one if it was going to mean that I'm accepting some position. And it was really not about that, and I felt it was important to be in the mix of finding out what's going on. And so I was asked to be on one with special education with my background, I'm serving with another superintendent who also was a special ed director. So we're looking forward to that, we have not met yet, so, but a couple teams have met, and so.
For clarity, when you say accepting a position, you mean a position on the topic, not a position like.
Yeah, no, I'm not, no, so, so they've just asked for different stakeholders to be on there to talk about it, develop timelines and where, where are they? Where do we foresee the issues and stuff like that? So it's not a position in any formal sense, but to be on that sprint.
I could see either way, like, I'll be on it as long as I'm not the chair.
And then there is a hyperlink to the, the different directors' comments that I, I don't know if folks had a chance to look at, but happy to take some questions.
All right, let's open it up to any questions for Andy, please. So Andy, I do, I took some time to look at the assessment data from the Agency of Education. And it's so frustrating that they've only released it now. And, and those charts that they provide are difficult to read. So I would just really, I'm glad that you and the staff are taking a deep dive into it, but will, after you've had some time to analyze it. Please come forward and really give us a substantial report and then find out how soon this year's data will be made available. You know, for everybody, you know, they, the, the state has changed the assessment methodologies being used, the actual instruments. So you can't compare last year to this year, which is incredibly frustrating. And here's the public wanting to know how the kids are doing. The data that was released was impacted significantly by COVID. It was the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The kids were just kind of coming back and trying to get into the rhythm. So we have a lot of questions.
As we do too, and we've had, so it just got released to public, so we've had it for a little bit of time and then, and been unpacking it, so I want to be clear on that. But it's also why, I think if Deb were here, she would, Deb Cardain, our Director of Instruction, would, would say, we put a lot of stock in our local assessments that we do. Because we get that quicker and so we can, we can start using that data right away. And, and again, when we look at the individual students, when you look at that, you see the, the reds, the oranges, the yellows, the greens and the blues and, you know. And, you know, it, a student can be. Far to the left in red, and and that one year, and the next year, they're still in red, if you if you want, which is red is not a good place to be.
Right.
But when we look at that student and we look at our local assessment, we can actually see the gains that the kid has actually made. And so even though they're still red, not proficient, they're making some significant grade level gains. And that's really where we feel the stock is. And the lag, because we're always a couple of years behind or a year behind in getting this data, the lag is how it transfers over to the state assessments, so.
This don't really help, did, oh, yes, go ahead, Ken.
Well, really, it's just. Monitoring what the state is doing and what data they're using to make decisions that they are. And so having people, I mean, I don't know, you know, about the group that you're with, but being on that kind of team. It seems to me those are the important questions. So for example, if they use that data as some indication of anything, and I don't see the longevity of data. We see what's happening around other places, so I'm just very um cautious about. The data upon which this whole mega hoo-ha is happening at the state level, that's all I'm wanting to say, so.
I like that, I like that term, I might, I might adopt that.
Mary.
I was just gonna say that in Shelley Wilson's report, she talks about OVX as our voice is exposed and talks about restorative justice as part of that. That's really beautiful to see, so I just, you you wonder what it was.
Yeah, no, thank you for calling that out, I appreciate that, yeah.
Shelley talked about it.
And then in in Deb's report, under assessments, she just does talk about an improvement that's being measured. In terms of basic early literacy, which is helpful. And this is just to, again, reinforce for the staff how valuable these additional directors' reports are. So, thank you, thank you for that.
We will, we'll definitely come back with an analysis, you know, some more in-depth stuff, so.
Yes.
Oh, can you tell, talk a little bit about the extended school year in the summer? I was fascinated by that, I didn't even know that was a thing here.
So, within special education, um. One of the things you have to do is evaluate, will students with, who are identifying with disabilities, will they have significant learning loss during the summer? So this has been something we've, that's been around since IDEA has been in place, and so it's called extended school year. And so one of the things we have to do is look at each individual student who has an IEP and look at, will they? You know, and and the team looks at it, so it's not an individual looks at, the team makes a decision. It, do we believe that there will be significant uh learning loss uh for that student? And so then we develop a program around that, and so, but the student isn't required to come. So that's the the challenge part, it's not like a, you know, um, but we do offer it, and so um. You know, Heather Willis Doxy has really come up with some, trying to come up with some real creative ways that we can reach students this summer. Where we've traditionally done the old brick and mortar, you show up for cer- certain numbers of days, and and we have a teacher there. We're looking at some different ways we might be able to use some technology to reach some kids, um and so that they can um. They can not necessarily always have to be right in front of the teacher, but they can show some progress and some learning. Uh, just had a conversation with her today, she's looking at a couple of different programs for that. Um, that could engage uh more students and and offer some more uh support directed at where a student. So if we're looking at a student, maybe they have a deficit in fractions, I'm gonna make something up, we can target that exactly for that student. Um, so that when they come back in the fall, we don't see that that learning loss dip um type of thing. And then with some of our other students who have even more significant um impairments. It's developing a program around that, what's what's gonna be best for them, um and and look at that, so.
Thank you.
Great question.
Is there a feel-good way to to promote that with the kids so that they don't feel like, as opposed to like summer school and feeling like it's a, it's a. Yeah, punishment or, you know, that they're. But, yeah, in a, in a way that, like. Just a thought like that.
No, I I think, and I think that's what's, some of the um approach that that um. Ms. Willis Doxy is taking is like, how do you personalize it for the student to show them that it's gonna be a gain? And it's not like you have to go to summer school, right, like, oh, here.
Or just make him feel different, like, you know, that they're.
Yeah. Um, so we've actually looked at um potentially, you know, we've had some early discussions about is this something that we could offer to all students?
Yeah.
In some ways, and that every kid might be able to a- access it if they wanted to, or maybe we target a couple of grades to see if it, how it would work. So it's not a, just because you're in special ed, but it would be something for all students.
And a way to structure it for the family so that it's, it adds convenience to their summer instead of inconvenience, you know, like. How do you, how do you structure it so that's like, oh, great, here's something my kid can do, so they're not under my feet all summer, or I don't have to figure out how to get. Take care.
Cheryl has your hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, thank you, did someone else? I know, this, it's just an idea about um. Have one teach one, in other words, thinking about using, you know, the students who, let's say, you know. From a different grade than those kids are from, being supports for them in some manner. You know what I mean, like, doing so that they're part of the group, in a way that that you were talking about. You know, that they're part of a group, but also could could be, I don't know, work with them in a particularly, not a, I don't know. Focused way, but in a playful way, I guess I'm wanting to say, so that's.
Here mentoring.
Yes.
Yeah.
Maybe not calling it mentoring or whatever, but it's great, I think, to do that, that's all.
Any other uh comments or questions for Andy on the superintendent's report? Okay, let's move on to alt business, and the first is the update on the website.
So uh, as I said, Ricky Adams, our IT director, he is here um remotely. Um, and he's gonna take over um my screen, and because he can do all of that from where he is.
Ooh, such power.
But um, you know, so I just wanna, I just also just wanna um back up a little bit, Ricky, I'm gonna go into this, and I'll be really brief here. We were found, uh we, we had a complaint from the Office of Civil Rights that our website was not accessible. You know, under the Americans with Disability Act for all people. Um, it wasn't anyone in our community that was harmed, it was caught up in a, in a large kind of. Dragnet of of, you know, people go out there and they look at websites and whatnot. Um, and so when we met with uh the Office of Civil Rights, uh we were given some opportunity to rectify it. And and to come into compliance. Uh, Ricky and his team have been working tirelessly, I mean, endless hours and 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 time outside of work. I I, I mean, Director of IT has a big job already, and 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 this needed to get done. And so um it's, I I've been very appreciative of the work that Ricky's done, and and the attention to detail to make sure we are hitting compliance. Um, has been really important, um and so um, we're, we're not fully there yet. So I I think that's, I wanna be, you know, like, we we had to get something done by tomorrow and and get it up, so we're, we're there. We've gotta still build some things behind it, so.
Thank you, Andy. Um, well, I'm Ricky Adams, I'm our Director of IT, as Andy said. Um, I'm going to, I think, just showcase a few pages, highlight some of the work we did. Um, I think the biggest thing to kind of think about and reflect on is. Tomorrow's a soft launch, it's not a final product, and um we're going to be continually refining this over the next couple of uh months. Really, ultimately, um we owe an inventory of all of our online webpages to the Office of Civil Rights and their current accessibility status. So that's kind of the impetus for, let's go live, let's get it mostly usable, bare bones. That then serves as our inventory for the Office of Civil Rights, and it serves as a great starting point for us to grow. Um, we decided to rebuild uh within a new platform, after reviewing our old platform and kind of going through the structure. And how it was set up in the backend, um a lot of the material on the old website was pretty dated and unusable. Um, so either it had accessibility problems, or the content just wasn't relevant anymore. Um, so we've spent a lot of time just kind of rebuilding, vetting, testing, learning. Um, it's really been between myself and the individual uh we contracted with, you know, we both work full-time. So we kind of do it in the evenings, um some, this week's been uh kind of a wash of the actual duties we had. I had, um, anyway, I will say, so the new platform, it's not fully finished. Soft launch, not final product, and I will share the screen. Um, not everything we brought over or created is necessarily accessible or perfect, we're gonna tweak and fine-tune. Um, we just need to reflect what's not perfect in our inventory to the OCR, and then we have um about three months or so to rectify it completely. Um, hopefully that made sense, let's just take a peek, I'm a nervous clicker, so if I start clicking a lot, that's why. Alright, so main SU homepage, um big difference over, I think, what we had before, kind of showcasing more of what's going on in our schools. Versus the uh other website where it was more of a, you know, you get hit with our logo and a box of boxes of images, really, ultimately. Um, going down the page, some quick links that are more useful if you're on mobile, and so not a lot of people actually visit websites from a computer anymore. It's a lot of mobile usage, um so hopefully, instead of, like, when you go to mobile, it turns into more of a pancake menu. So like, if you scroll down and you need to get somewhere quick, it's easier just to click these buttons, honestly, than deal with the pancake. Um, news and events, um I suspect this will end up, right now, it's linked to like our social media pages and stuff. So as we progress, um, I think Andy and team will likely end up posting here and then pushing the social media. Uh, it's a good workflow. Just a quick little uh upcoming meetings, a nice little welcome to them, we see with some images. They link off to various areas, get a nice little footer. Um, images of our schools, you know, very basic stuff. Um, we go back up to the top, this has been just tireless work trying to figure out like what's appropriate for our sites. And what can we include in the submenus, right? Um, so really just working through each one of these pages, um times seven, because we have seven sites. Um, we continue on here, we can go peek at the calendar, so the calendar page, we're still refining a little bit. Um, in that, you know, are we going to do primarily a, a um kind of grid accessible calendar with proper table headings and all of that? Um, you know, are we gonna structure it a little differently, not sure yet, this is our current draft, that's gonna go live tomorrow. We have a printable version up top that brings you to the non-accessible version that we're so used to and familiar with. We look at the top bar here. No, thank you. Um, if we look at the top bar here, we have some quick links, uh so we have a family portal that we put together, it's gonna be similar per school. We have a student portal that we've put together, that'll be different per school and more appropriate for the age bands. A staff portal for employees to get quick information, it's also linked under the resources here. Um, let's see. One of the major efforts, uh this was actually a Friday afternoon, Saturday project, was converting our policies from our, their current scanned PDF format. Into um a text format that you can actually use and search. Um, we have kind of the first run of that posted live on the website, that's gonna go live tomorrow. And I think we're about sixteen hours or so into that one component of the project. So the biggest kind of goal was to be able to search through the policies right on the website without having to manually go through every. Policy and try to find the text you needed, right? Um, so like, if I wanted to search for harassment, I could find the policies that have the term harassment, and then I could go in and view said policies. Um, all of these drafts, not sure if we're gonna keep it exactly this way. But all the policies, you can click into them, it'll bring you to that text page. Um, where it's properly tagged and headed and all that for accessibility, so the proper heading one, heading two eighty-three. The heading structure that's expected under um accessibility. Um. Moving on, that's enough of the SU, um we can look at a school, so each school, elementary school looks more or less the same. In terms of menu structure, um so each submenu, the school level, they have, you know, nice images. If we could find some nice high-quality images to throw up, we tried to, um for launch tomorrow, obviously, we're gonna grow. Uh, again, that same structure that you saw at the SU website, uh just some customized text here and there. Um. Another kind of major effort was taking our school handbooks and converting those into um a different format. Um, so down here at the bottom, we're still refining this a bit, but we really wanted to have that same search functionality that um. You have in the policies, so we kind of replicated that in the handbook, so each one of these ham, these links goes off to a separate article. That's in the current school handbook, um of course, there's still the printable version of the handbook that you can view. Let's see, what else can we go into?
And and Ricky, why, why, why you're doing this, and I just wanna, this wasn't like a, let's upload a file. And um it it all converts somehow, I mean, someone had to do the work, yes?
Yes, yes, absolutely. We may have done the, the majority of our policies in one sitting, I don't know, it wasn't healthy, but they're mostly done now. High school, again, similar structure, you can see their menu bar has just an activities item added on here. Um, this is the draft that's gonna go live tomorrow, this is what we're gonna inventory off of for the Office of Civil Rights. And this is what we're gonna expand and grow upon, um.
Ricky, can you show us it in mobile, can you collapse it so that it displays on mobile that we can see?
Absolutely, let's go to the SU.
And could I, maybe while, what were the issues that were considered not accessible that caused this to happen? My accessibility has different meaning for me.
Yeah, um, my understanding is, and and Ricky's much deeper into this, but it had to do with like, if you were visually impaired. And needed a screen reader.
Yes.
So when you have a PDF, which is like a picture, the screen reader cannot read all of the words. And so everything that, any texts that are up on the screen.
Yes.
Has to have like different tags, like this is a heading, this is a this, so, so.
So it is accessible in that way, that's what I'm wanting to say.
Yes, and so when I sent something to Ricky today, I had to literally go through and outline, oh, this is the title, this is the header. This is a, and it's an extra twenty minutes on on, but then I had that SU logo, I had to go in and tag that as. This is a logo, so that a reader could read that, and but it's the right thing to do, and so we wanna do it correctly. And take our time to make sure, that's why we, as Ricky's saying, we started from rebuilding as opposed to trying to take everything we were doing.
Is there any audio, in other words, uh for people who don't hear well but see? I'm just curious.
Yeah, Ricky, I I, we don't have that, but I think if someone had a reader, that it could.
Might do that.
It could have a a text to speech, so it would go along and read it to them, so.
It would be a, bring your own screen reader, um but it's supposed to read the page in a certain way.
Yeah, thank you.
Great question.
That's great.
That's great.
Is that, is that helpful to you, uh that was Jamie, right?
Yes, yeah, I just.
Yes, okay, I figured maybe the platform would be more useful for trying to get the mobile views, because it gives like the various like iPad tablet view.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, like I said, though, not everything on here is fully and absolutely as perfect as it needs to be, um we're good, it's, it's a process. I I would say trust the process, but sometimes I question, no, anyway, um. Anyway, I I, is there anything else you want me to go over, Andy? I feel like I um, I don't know, I'm not sure how.
The piece is, is, you know, as Ricky has said numerous times, but our, our, our goal here is to, as we build out a new page. Or or so, so like, we'll have a curriculum page, but we'll build that correctly from the go as we're building it out. So it will take a, you know, there'll be, and that's one of the things we'll spend some time uh with administration on having them, like. What is our timeline so we can launch di- different? On having them, like, what is our timeline so we can launch di- different pages on correctly? Cause, cause we need. A principal or a director to add us, give us the information, so we, we need to build that information as we're going along, so.
We'll say, we have a lot, I think I put it in the report, but we're also launching um this March, April, um, Power Schools, um. Online enrollment product, so this year we used a homegrown home bill enrollment form. Uh, so that'll be another kind of integration into the website and hopefully improvement for families because they don't. You know, after this year and going forward, they won't have to replicate all of the details that they keep filling out for all the children, the, the reenrollment forms that they do every year. Hopefully the schools will be more streamlined, but then hopefully it'll just be more of a uniform experience online to where we have more digital forums accessible to people. Uh, same intent for staff down the road, ED forums, et cetera, have that just be an online forum, not a, not a PDF that you download and fill out. That's not an online forum, but something on the website that people can get to, there's a lot of long-term goals, just not a lot of time or staffing to get it done. Um, but we're gonna keep growing as we can.
That's great, Ricky. Is there any, it doesn't sound like there's anything more to present, is that correct right now? Okay, uh, then any questions uh about any of this for Ricky?
Um, I have one, oh yeah. Um, Ricky, is the menu, uh, you know, one thing that I've seen before is that those dropdown menus can be tricky in terms of accessibility. Is that something that you've worked out is that that particular style of dropdown menu is, is still accessible for folks? They know that there's content below that top he- header menu?
Yeah, so let me just back up and say a little bit that, um. When we moved platforms, we had a written contract that this website, uh, um, kind of finalization, maybe not at launch. But once we're certified, um, is accessible, so if we run into additional problems with those menus. That'll have to be rectified through kind of their contractual obligations, so I just tiptoed her a little bit around your question. The direct answer is no, I don't know for sure, uh, if the menu is accessible, but. Uh, in contract, we'll have it rectified if it's not.
I think kind of what I heard your question being is having dealt with the things where you click on the menu and then if you. Don't keep your cursor in just the right spot, the menu disappears and you gotta go back and click on it again and that's, that frustration of.
Hmm, and making sure that the, the screen reader signaled that there is content below that to, to be sort of like read and known. Yeah, great.
Any other questions for Ricky?
I don't have a question, but I just like, you know, I've always been a Ricky supporter and having known him for a few years now and in and out of here. And what a great job he does, and I think he underemphasized the monumental task of converting all those documents. To the appropriate format, like I've been involved in a few software and document control packages where. That had to be done and it is, uh, it's a, it's a huge task to get everything in the right format and converted. And, um, I just, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Good, yes, a lot of work.
Thank you, Ricky. So, so let me, let me add to that too, I mean, there's your attention to uh detail and your sense of responsibility. The many, many hours you've been putting in here, we all are immensely grateful, so thank you for that, uh, truly. I, I do have a, a question about ongoing maintenance, one of our issues has been keeping the website current. And it's my understanding, once you get through most of this, that you'll be able to train people at each of the buildings. So that each school, for example, can update their own website and add to it. So we don't really have designated staff, uh, you fit this in kind of miraculously on top of everything else. But could you say a little bit more about how that part will work once we're past this initial conversion?
Yeah, I, before I do that, I just wanna say thank you for the kind words, also, um, there's a contractor I've been supporting us, uh, Karen Wright. Done tremendous, she's been tremendously helpful with all of this as well, um. So, let me just say, one of the. One of the more pain points we had with staff directories outside of news and kind of teacher webpages, teacher webpages are gonna be a, a challenge, long-term, short-term. I think they're gonna be more static than they have been in the past. Um, in terms of we may put up content, the school might not necessarily continually update that content. Staff directories, we've got an auto import happening from our student information system now, so now we don't have to, um, keep it updated in multiple places. Um, I think to struggle long-term, there will be pictures, uh, you know, getting appropriate pictures, but we're, we're through that. Um, when it comes to news and current events and all of that, uh, I know right now the intent is to kind of train the principal, train the admin assistant. And the functions and responsibilities of the website, but how we ultimately end up doing those out, I'm not sure, one hundred percent. Um, it'll be, you know, how much. Trying to think about the equity piece, you know, do certain schools have certain key staff that are able to um be trained? And it kind of what you should do for accessibility, um, and then if not, what do you do in those instances? Um, I, I don't think we have an answer to that necessarily, yeah. I didn't, did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I, I do think it's a goal, I think it's a goal to have people at the building level. Be able to update their own portion of the website so that the information's current. And it's actually a nice set of skills for admin staff, uh, and even principal, uh, to have. So, so I, 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 I think we got into a place. Uh, relatively recently that our website was simply out of date in so many ways. And I, I think we need to have it be not only professional looking, what you're doing. And to be in compliance with law, what you're doing, but we need to be able to plan for a way to have it continually updated. And you don't have time, nor does your staff, there needs to be a way to distribute that uh responsibility.
Yeah, it, it kind of comes down to a workflow, um, and if we're going to task. You know, someone else at the building and, and I think where Ricky's really. Kind of directed me in, as we go into this with the accessibility piece, is we've gotta make sure. The, the next person who's going to be putting things up is trained. And we can't just open it up to everybody because you gotta make sure it's, it's got that accessibility piece, and so it's, it's. Gonna, you know, it's like, who do we train first to do that and then who do we train second and, and, and then it's like, as Ricky said, who has, you know? One person might be like, ready to jump in and do everything, and the next person, we're having to walk them through like. Step one, you know, so like it's everyone's comfort level and so, um, library media specialists are another person. Another group that we, we've talked about is, is potential, so, um, but that is our goal, yes, is that. Schools will be responsible for updating their content on a, a regular basis so that people can expect. That, you know, whether it's weekly or bi-weekly, there will be content that is updated, so.
I mean, I don't know what. I am probably in, like. Run in opposition to some folks on various boards and such in this realm. But I believe in having the staff and support that we need and at some point, like, is there a need for like? A social media specialist who takes care of the website and takes care of the, all those communication type things that are important. And, you know, it's, it's twenty twenty-five, like, you know, mimeographing a, a newsletter is not. The way that people function in the world today and like everybody relies on the website and those. Those various tools for knowing what's going on, like the calendar is a huge thing, the, you know, that people rely on. Like I, I live by my electronic calendar and all of our calendars that I have in my day job or. A gazillion things, um, you know, and like putting that burden on peak. I don't know, anybody in this room who's worked with any sort of like, you know, digital media or software program or something that you don't use. On a regular daily basis that you have to update once a month, even something like that is gonna be more struggle and more burden on. Ricky's current staff than trying to get those people trained because when Andy goes in to update some pictures and all of a sudden they're like, you know. Pictures from the nineteen thirty-eight Red Sox game, and he can't figure out how to change them back, then somebody's gonna come in and fix that.
It a- actually with pic, uh, sorry, with pictures and, and when Ricky was walking me through this. He was, we have lots of pictures because, you know, people pull out their phone and let me take a picture, but when you, what do you, what is it, two D? Like, for the website, it's like, the pixel thing, you know, like, and so once we, once we put it up on this new website, it gets all blurry. And so we've gotta have that high quality and.
You know, that's further to my point of like, somebody who really knows what they're doing needs to be doing some of that stuff. And you can't just put it in the hands of somebody that might have an extra half hour a week too.
Ricky, did you wanna comment? But I see your.
No, I think we welcome the additional support, but.
Alright, Karen, Karen's hands up too. Yeah, I, um, Rick, when you were showing the, you know, the Westminster. I'm curious about whether when you click on that Westminster icon, whether the Westminster Weekly, for example, shows up then. Is that?
You're talking about the schools weekly that they put out there, that will, would be a stream that is on there.
I was gonna say, that's an opportunity, you know, if, in the short term, if we can't get folks, how do we integrate some of the newsletters that already exist? Do all the schools use Smore or whatever, so like how, yeah, how do you integrate that software that, you know, your schools are already using onto the site?
And, and in fact, Ricky and I just had the conversation this morning, cause I said, I gotta get a newsletter out and start, you know, posting newsletter. And I said, you know what, I, you know, cause I'm used to doing it on text, and he's like, well, I hate to tell you this, but Smores is gonna be the best way to do it because it's all, it.
It's already in the, yeah, right, yeah, oh, that'd be great.
Ultimately, that's what's going to be. On this site, so that you can go and look at like the newsletters that are, like I could look at somebody else's newsletter that I might not get. You know what I mean, like wrapped in.
Exactly, that would be great to see, we should, we should move along, go ahead, no merit.
I just can't, since this is through the Office of Civil Rights, I just keep wondering if there are grants available for this type of work. It must be affecting tons and tons of our neighbors in other states as well. And I wonder if there's a way, since Ricky's been spending so much time, time is money and it's gonna be a continual drain. You have to wonder, since this is helping the entire population understand what we do, maybe there's some money out there somewhere.
Good point.
One thing I wanted to just say, and I remind our people sometimes is, um. It's not the website police, it's, it's every, the Office of Civil Rights covers, covers everything, all sorts of accessibility, real chair entrance into your buildings. The paddles, all of that, so it's kind of those unfunded mandates that you, you get burdened with, I feel like we did some searching for some. Um, grant opportunities and we didn't really find anything to any magnificent, magnificent effect to, to redo our websites. Um, and I just wanted to kind of answer Karen real quick in that, yeah, we're gonna link off to the small newsletters that your school puts out. But the, the content on those li- newsletters are not, is not, um, necessarily compliant as is. So there's even more workflow processes to improve down the line.
Sure, yeah, thanks for. Okay, well, let's wrap this up, I'll make one more comment, and that is that, on the one hand, I suggested that we might do the training at the building level. To have them pick up things and still be the SU information that, that has to be done by the central staff. But Rick, uh, raised another possibility, and that is with budget implications that we might need to hire more support. For this web presence, uh, at the SU level as well, so hold those thoughts and right now we're in the launch tomorrow, soft launch. And we're cheering you and your team on, Ricky, thank you. Alright, and you can leave us if you choose now, right?
Yeah, thank you, Ricky, yeah, you deserve a break.
Very good, so we'll move on to uh policies, Andy, do you wanna help us with?
Yeah, so, uh, these, uh, the policies that are before you are policies that, um. We had, uh, looked at, uh, again, just real briefly, uh, looking at updating some of our policies. Um, they're going back to two thousand nine, so, um, in a purpose world, we're reviewing and updating our policies every three years. So we're trying to get on track to do that, um, but a lot of, when you update one policy, it tags into a bunch of others. And so, um, these group of policies before you are ones that are all referencing back and forth to each other. Um, they are, uh, highly recommended by the Vermont School Boards Association. Um, the first one, um, I don't know, you want me to go on individually or I just go through the title? The first one is just an update of the search and seizure of students by school personnel, so that policy just, um. Talks about how, uh, what our, uh, students and our, um, staff can expect in doing that and our families can expect. Um, the next one is student athletics, clubs and activities, this is actually one that we did not have. Um, but does, um, outline procedures around, um, the support of athletics, clubs and activities, uh, within our schools. Um, the next one is transgender and gender non-conforming students, uh, this is, uh, as Caitlin had spoken of earlier during couple of comment. It's one that has been recommended for some years, um, and has just not been brought before us, um. But it does recognize all students, um, in that policy. Uh, the next one is a district equity policy, which off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what it actually means and I apologize. Let me pull that up and I'll go on to the next one, which is the community use, uh, school facilities. We've had a brief one on that, um, this one is much more in-depth, um, and, um, just outlines. Uh, basically how we, um. Allow, uh, communities to use our buildings and our facilities, um, so, um, that is the one, and I'm just looking at the equity policy real quick here.
Yeah.
Um, but I can answer any questions if people have them while I'm looking for it.
Okay, any questions from anybody about the policies? Again, we actually looked at them a month ago. We tabled it in order to make sure they could be on the website for public review as well as additional time on the part of the. Boards, but it was really especially to allow for that public review since they had not been on the.
Yeah, and the equity policy just says that you, uh, basically as a, as a board. And, um, that we, um, do not discriminate against students and that all students, um, regardless of race, ethnicity, religion. Family economics, class, geography, ability, many other things after that, um, but all those things that we look at all students and all students are equal. And have equity and access to all education.
Mm-hmm, okay, so we can, uh, entertain a motion to, uh. You mean, take action on each of these individually or we can take them as a group? Or we can take them as a person group, but it's kind of up to the, up in the board what you'd like to do.
Sure, and I ask, have they been vetted through the lawyer since the, the judge made the. Uh, determination that some of the statements aren't legal and the new things that are coming out? Have we sent them back to them, to the lawyer to look at it to make sure we're okay?
Can you address that, Andy?
Uh, I have not sent them to our legal, um, we have, uh, res, you know, um, V S B A. And, um, associations and, and the Agency of Education have put out very strong messages around supporting all students. Um, including transgender and gender non-conforming students as they are protected under Vermont state law as well.
Thank you.
In light of, I believe this is the third time we've reviewed these, I'll make a motion to accept them all as presented.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor to.
Do we need to second it?
We don't have to.
Yeah, but you may.
I second it. Alright, are there any, is there any discussion, uh, about, about the motion?
I'm curious about the, are you saying an internal coding system with the C twenty-one and the E twenty, or is that V S B A also? Just curious.
A little of both.
Okay.
So you have to have a numeration system.
Sure.
We had one, V S B A, when they came out with some new stuff, changed their numeration system, we didn't have to change. We did start changing it and it's actually a lot of the work Ricky showed you.
Wow.
Has been part of why it's taken so long, and so we have to go back and just create a numeration system, so I've been working with Ricky on that. So some of these new numbers may change.
But the search function is just gonna be so incredibly helpful, that is the one thing that has just made me crazy, I'm so excited about that.
Yeah, but we are working to conform with V S B A because that also is what most districts are. So someone coming in, they're like, what's C twenty, you know, do you have C twenty-two? And we're not going, well, what's C twenty-two? It's bull.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, any other comments or questions? Then the motion on the floor is to approve the suite of, uh, policies as listed here, I won't go through all of them, but it's the whole group. Each listed individually, uh, and so, uh, in the room, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, and then I'll go to the screen, uh, Kathy?
Aye.
Okay, okay, so the policies are uh, adopted. Thank you very much. The next uh, business item uh, is the Vermont Rural School Community Alliance. We had this on the agenda uh, at our last meeting. And it was tabled and uh, in the meantime, additional information has been uh, offered. I sent you out material today. Uh, and this is just a, 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 well, I can provide a detailed review of everything I sent you today, but really the action is to consider actually joining uh, the alliance and that would be the Wind of Northeast Supervisory Union doing so. So far Athens Grafton uh, has voted to sign it as an independent, as an independent school district. And so too has Westminster uh, voted to, to join uh, the new alliance. You know, um, philosophically, um, there's now more than 50 school boards and select boards and parent teacher groups around the state and more are joining all the time, uh, quite honestly. And the spirit is to be for quality education at an affordable price. You know, the taxpayers can pay in Vermont. Looking for anything within the governor's proposal of January 22nd that can be supported. Uh, at the same time with real concerns about the gist of it being a dissolving of all the local school boards and the creation of five school mega districts uh, in the state. So this group has a position, has positions that are emerging. We're already a part of it um, through, through individual districts, but this is just an opportunity if the SU uh, wants to be a part of it as well.
I love that the SU becoming a part of this. It's really such an important um, collection of smart people around the, you know, and educators around the state.
Is there a motion on the floor? She just made it.
I just made it.
Sorry, I missed the word.
All right.
Right. Any other comments or questions from anybody? All right, there's a motion on the floor to join the um, Vermont Rural School Community Alliance. Uh, and go to the screen. The screen is frozen.
Screen is frozen, but they can hear us. So I'll take care of that while we're doing that.
All right, well, let, let me start with a vote in the room then. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we'll see whether Kathy can vote.
They could, they can hear you. So and they can speak, but I'm just gonna have.
That was an aye from Hardy. Okay, and Kathy?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll be delighted to uh, report that to the alliance. You probably saw in the literature I sent you today, I would encourage you to look at the position statement, the one that's called the platform in response to the governor's proposal. Because if you've got any questions about that or further suggestions, uh, please let me know. I'll be happy to share them uh, with, with, with you all. Uh, we do have a press conference. The alliance has a press conference tomorrow in Montpelier. About six of us are speaking uh, up there and uh, it will be another shared.
Let me the time again.
It's one o'clock, one o'clock uh, uh, at the, at the Capitol. Yeah. But one, one of the things I think about it is again, that um, we're, we're really looking at ways to be collaborative, to be positive, to be cooperative as we all work on this, these very important issues through the state. And that's the spirit of this alliance. Uh, I would, I would share with you. All right. All right, next, uh, you have uh, New Business United Way Kids and Coats Donation and we need some action, right, Andy?
We, we do. We had a donation for that and I told you when you time to see if I actually have that with me and I want to be able, um, tell you exactly what that was. The amount was, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So I thought it was in my packet, so.
If you can't find it, we can put it on the next agenda.
Um.
Is the money to purchase coats for our population?
That it is.
Cool.
That I know.
Well, that's good. So, so we could approve it in concept, whatever you're doing, you're just, you're buying coats for our kids, huh?
Yes, and is there, well, I'm curious, is there an age range of these kids or are they, you know what I mean, different? I'm, I'm curious because if someone had a new coat and they wanted to donate it, that's the only thing to ask. And if we knew the age of.
I usually call them school nurses and see what they need.
Uh-huh, but this is United Way, so it must be.
So it's, it, this is coming through Shelley Wilson's office, who is our director of um, Student and Family Services. So I would um, I, I'll be going back to her to get more information, like what you're asking, like, is it um, those things. Um, I do apologize. I, I thought I had it in front of me. I just do not have it.
But what, what this is in concept though is they are giving us a donation and all we're doing is formally accepting it.
And, and, and then we are making sure families are getting
Getting the coats.
That they need, yes.
Okay, so I think we can entertain a motion to accept uh, this donation
On the United Way.
From the United Way. So move, that would be Lynn moving quickly on that one.
All right.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, we get to see Hardy and Kathy back on. So we'll let you vote. Hardy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And Kathy?
Aye.
Perfect. All right, and those in the room signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous.
And I will, I will ask Ms. Wilson to get some deeper information, get that out to you.
All right, um, so let's go around uh, and do the rectors' comments and then we'll talk a little bit about the date and time of the next meeting with the Dr. W. Sennas uh, today. So with that, Kathy, any director's comments tonight?
Um, yeah, it's, it's a good meeting. Um, I hope that the new person um, that's doing the financials um, will let us know upfront when there's some discrepancies and some um, you know, budgets that have been forgotten into the budget and then we have lots of deficits. Um, we, we just need to know that information beforehand.
Okay, thank you very much. Hardy?
Um, I would just like to thank Ricky for his uh, hard work and uh, the wonderful job he's doing with the website. Thank you.
Wait, let me go to Mary.
Um, I'd like to thank Andy for getting us the wording to these new policies early enough to really understand what they say. And they're so well-written, they're so thorough and seeing like the arms of the school around our population just fills me with hope for this community. I really think they're gems. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are one, on the, yes, the technology piece. You did an amazing job. Considering I have trouble losing an email when I open it up.
Very impressed. Very good, very good. Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, I echo, you know, as I, I often said here, what a great job I think Ricky's done over the, over the years. And it's really great to have our, you know, somebody who's been a part of our community from childhood and a student of our schools to, to be a part of it. And it also just, I, you know, sitting here, I was reflecting on all the unsung heroes of our district that are doing, you know, we often think about the, the teachers and the, the principals and the staff, but we don't often think about how important Nicole's work is and the, I can't, I'm drawing a blank on her name, the woman in HR and all the, all the people, all the people at the center, at the main office that are doing their jobs to keep this machine running. Um, you know, it's a, there, there's a lot of work there too. And I think, you know, every once in a while, it's good to recognize those folks and let them know they're appreciated. So this is me letting all of your staff know that we recognize them and they're.
If you're okay, I'll pass that along.
Please.
Comments, but I just wanted to make sure, so.
Absolutely, Karen. Yes, yes, yes.
Seriously, all of those comments are my comments. That's what I wanted to say. So.
Um, yeah, I, I definitely echo, you know, Ricky's hard work, um, amazing job. So I'm going to thank Ricky and his team for all that. Um, and the policies, I'm, I'm happy that we're, we're getting those on board. Um, so good work with all that. And also I'm happy that we are joining this Rural School Community Alliance and thank you for your work with that, Cheryl. I think um, it's really important that we have a voice and these schools have a voice at a time when it kind of feels like folks are trying to take some power and shut some schools down and I would not like to see that. So I'm glad to be part of this and, and really make sure that we all have a voice here. So.
Yes.
Thank you all, really. I just, I just wanted to say thanks to this team of people who really care about what we're doing, you know?
I won't add anything. I think you've all said it well. Uh, let's look at the date and time of the next meeting. And Andy, you gave us uh, a, a very helpful calendar of dates. And so our next meeting is actually March 12th.
Correct, so what?
Talk us through what you.
Thank you. Um, so what needs to happen is after town meeting and after votes, um, we have a reorganization and seating of the new board. So um, there could be changes in, in um, members, membership. So uh, what we try to do is um, get the local districts to, to reorganize first, which then leads to, because they have to name people to be on the SU board. And then we have the SU board meet. So, so we've recommended Rockingham and, and um, the high school meet on that Monday, uh, the 10th, which is uh, right after the um, uh, the vote. Uh, and then on Tuesday, um, that Athens Grafton and Westminster then uh, meet. Uh, that would all be here at the high school just to um, so we can be efficient in doing that. And then on Wednesday, the SU uh, board would then need to be reorganized. Um, what we need is any members who need to get sworn in, do so before those meetings because that will be important. Um, so uh, there's that. And then what we are proposing at this point, because it will actually be up to those board chairs if they want to do it, that if they are looking to do business in March is to then use the um, the second um, the alternate uh, times to meet. And so um, we would kind of go into our regular Monday and, and, and Thursday meetings so that if there's business that needs to happen in March, that those would be the meetings. And then again, what we listed at the bottom there is just the rest of this, this year broken out, so.
Based on how it's currently done.
Yes, yeah. But that could change because, you're right. So I mean, but I just wanted to, if there were any members who were looking to plan their calendar out, just to start having that, so.
Yeah.
That's really helpful. Thanks a bunch.
Okay, I think there's no other business and so we'll adjourn at 7:14, 7:15. Thanks to everybody. Wonderful.